And please again welcome Ms. Carol Simpson of ABC News as we formally begin.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Okay. I can't hear myself and that's very... I'd like to present our distinguished panel, first of all, tonight. Tonight, this afternoon. It's been a rough day. In addition to the chairman, I'd like to call next Ben Chavis, the Executive Director of the NAACP. Representative Maxine Waters from the state of California. The Reverend Jesse Jackson of the Rainbow Coalition. And last but not least, Minister Louis Farrakhan from the Nation of Israel. Is he here? Is he coming?
He's coming.
Please be seated, everyone. We've got quite a crowd here. I want to welcome you to the Congressional Black Caucus Foundation's National Town Meeting, "The Meeting of Race, Part Two: A Political Perspective." It is my honor and obligation today to moderate this important forum. And when I found out who the panelists were going to be today, I have to admit, I was a little daunted. These gentlemen are among the great orators of our community. But last year, I was able to keep three white guys who wanted to be president in check, so I shouldn't have too much trouble with these four brothers. We're talking about the meaning of race. And I come here today from Nashville, Tennessee, where yesterday I was on assignment for ABC News and I was interviewing an elderly white couple with serious health problems for a report on the proposed Clinton health care reform plan. I wanted to hear their concerns about what would happen to their Medicare benefits. And they were a very sweet old couple and I was enjoying talking with them. And towards the end of the interview, I asked them why they thought the United States had gotten into such a fix over high health care costs and their contribution to the federal deficit. The old woman responded that first she thinks it's all these foreigners were letting into the country. And then she said, "All that foreign aid we're giving to Israel, why do we have to do that?" And then she said, and I quote, "And then it's all those blacks sitting on their big duffs, waiting for the government to give them something." That was just yesterday's reminder to me that race is still a big issue. And I got hundreds of them. I get them all the time. Yes, we need to talk about the meaning of race today. Yesterday, at the first part of this National Town Meeting, the discussion centered on the aborted nomination of Lonny Gwinier to head up the Civil Rights Division at the Justice Department. She said, and again I quote, "In a strange way, my nomination came to symbolize the state of denial in which we find ourselves on the issues of civil rights in particular and race in general." She went on to say that we seem to have, in this country, on the issue of race, a "don't ask, don't tell" policy. Just avoid any discussion. Well, today, we're going to ask and we're going to tell. And we have just the kind of folks to do that. I'm not going to bore you with the litany of all the accomplishments of these gentlemen and this distinguished lady you see before you. So I'm going to tell you how the format will be. I will ask each of them to make an opening statement of about six minutes and I will watch the clock. We're going to stay on time. I have no hesitation in cutting you off. Then we're going to get some discussion going with some questions that I'd like to pose based on some of the issues that they raise in their opening comments. And then we're going to give you an opportunity to ask questions. But I understand you're going to be asked to put them in writing with your name, your organization, and your city. And I think that is in the interest of time and to keep from you all making more speeches than we have up here. So that is the format. So without further ado, I'd like to begin by calling on Congressman Infume.
On a point of personal privilege, Carol, would you allow me the opportunity to do one small acknowledgement that I hope will not be counted against me? We have a number of members of the Congressional Black Caucus who are here today. And like you, are here because of their genuine interest. I would ask if those members of the Congressional Black Caucus who are here would stand up briefly that we might be able to acknowledge you. And some in the back there. And over there. Thank you very much. At the turn of the century, W.E.B. Du Bois, in his classic work entitled "The Souls of Black Folks," wrote, and I quote, "That the problem of the 20th century was, in fact, to be the problem of the color line." Du Bois's words were prophetic and in many respects, he uttered better than he knew. For we are now in the last decade of that century. And we continue to see how race and racism have dominated every aspect of American life, both at home and abroad. And so we have gathered today as a group of people who have suffered, endured, and survived two centuries of slavery, oppression, deprivation, degradation, denial, and disprivilege. Reaching out in a very sincere and open way and saying to the nation that we love, that we must find a way, even in these last few years of this decade that he wrote about, to come to grips with the question of race and racism in this country. Because we love so much this nation, but because also we love each other and we recognize, like others may not, that the only way to deal with this is to deal with it. There are far too many throughout every city, state, and hamlet in this nation who find, as we do, the stories and the examples just referred to you in Carol's remarks, they are too abundant and too abundantly clear. They still resonate against the backdrop of this nation's democracy. And they still call at all of us to try to find ways to change it. We know that the problem did not begin yesterday. The master slave ontology and the doctrine of white supremacy, pre-existent before the nation was founded, have made and kept, unfortunately, our society a nation of two societies, one black, one white, separate and unequal. And yet, we also know that differences and difficulties between groups in our society are not novel or new. But we know that our approach to them in 1993 and beyond must be both. America, at her very best, has treated those differences with a blend of common sense and compassion. America, at her worst, has treated them with the empty even-handedness of Marie Antoinette. And so we gather here at this legislative weekend as Africans in the diaspora, reaching out to people throughout this nation and throughout the world to come to grips with the meaning of race, so that we might be able to get beyond the manner in which it divides us. Reaching out to say that we recognize and accept and are prepared to discuss our differences so that we might find time in this short commodity we call a life to focus on our similarities, which are so many, many more. Because when you cut through all of us and you cut through the basic core of the existence of all people, we're not that dissimilar. We all want a better life today than the life that we inherited from our parents. We want our children to be able to grow up in a society that is free and open, that is pregnant with opportunity, that affords them the possibility, and indeed, the probability, to create even more generations free from the things that constrain and harness our lifestyles. We want a society where health care is real and meaningful, where housing is really housing for all people, where we believe, as we must believe, that educational parity in our schools is crucial to educational excellence in our nation. And so this political perspective, then, which comes on the heels of yesterday's discussion with Dr. Higginbotham and Ms. Gwinier and so many others, comes at a time, we believe, that we hope will find a way to shape, for all of us, the beginnings of that dialogue here. But we have suffered far too long and we are far too anxious for change. Politically, it is not enough to come to these gatherings once a year and to exchange ideas and views. We must put in place plans that are short-term and long-term. And then we must establish barometers and yardsticks that will allow us to measure that politically, so that when we return again, we will know whether or not we've done anything at all. These people who have gathered here have come, as all of you have, out of a sense of commitment, but because they love us and they love those of us still unforeseen. They have run here, like many of you have, on the backs of nameless and faceless people of color, who wanted, in the last generation, and in the generation before that, and even the generation before that, to have a society in which they were, as Dr. King said, not judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. And they have gone to their graves. And as we prepare one day to go to our graves, we recognize that we are still faced with that same challenge. And so we say to all in this nation who would dare listen to us, black, white, Jew, Gentile, Asian, Latino, that we are brothers and sisters in a long and difficult struggle, that our similarities ought to be ways that we link and find a new strength and a new resolve to those who will oppress all of us. And that until we understand our brotherhood and our sisterhood and our personhood, we will have done failed to learn the real meaning of race. And the problem that Du Bois uttered at the turn of the century will be uttered again as we ish usher in the year 2000. We pray that in the discussion today and in the discussions that follow, we might be blessed by Almighty God with a new insight and a divine inspiration to reach out to everyone and to find that new way. Thank you very much.
He gets an A for keeping to time. Reverend Chavis, would you like to take the podium from the NAACP? Ben Chavis.
Thank you very much. First, giving all honor and praise to God Almighty. On behalf of the NAACP, we would like to thank the Congressional Black Caucus for convening a most important discussion about the meaning of race. Several weeks ago, at our national convention in Indianapolis, we were pleased to receive an address by the Chairman of the Congressional Black Caucus, Congressman Infume. And at that time, we pledged a strategic alliance between the NAACP and the Congressional Black Caucus. And so we're pleased to be here in that vein. We come today in the spirit of unity. We come today in the pursuit of greater clarity on what it is that unites us and what it is that divides us. We come in the spirit of looking for answers to our problems, solutions to our problems. I'm sure each panelist today could give a long litany about what is wrong. And we need to do that. But I'm hopeful today that we will also arrive at a consensus about what we can engage in together to have some solutions to the problems that beset our people. Chairman Infume has referred to the vision of W.E.B. Du Bois. As you know, Brother Du Bois was one of the founders of the NAACP. And since 1909, we have been on the road of fighting racial injustice, fighting lynchings, fighting racial discrimination in all of its various manifestations for low now 84 years. And we believe, as we look toward the 21st century, we can say, yes, there has been some progress made toward racial justice. But we also have to admit in public that we still have a mighty, mighty, long ways to go. Even here in the nation's capital, a predominantly African-American city. If you want to know the political meaning of race, look at Washington, D.C. Look at a city where African-Americans do not have full voting representation in the Congress of the United States. That is a political meaning of race. When Dr. Du Bois said that the 20th century, the major problem facing the 20th century would be the problem of the color line, it was not that color itself would be a problem, but the barrier, the line that was drawn based on color. Limiting access to opportunity based on color. Racial discrimination. Just in the last couple of years, and even this year, we've seen how the judicial system in our nation treats African-Americans with one standard of justice and other Americans with another standard of justice. The list is long, from L.A. to Detroit, now down in Miami. Even as we are gathered here, Mr. Chairman, SWAT teams, law enforcement officers are swarming down on African-American communities in Miami because of violent crime that has been committed on some tourists. And certainly, we in the NAACP, we're against all violent crime. No one should have crime committed. But where is all of the excitement when crime is in the African-American community? There is no excitement about it. There is no excitement about it. So the politics, the politics of race in America today means that those in power ignore race when those in power benefit from racial discrimination. But when those in power are injured because of race, then they raise all kinds of circumstances to get the nation's attention. We've also witnessed, in all honesty, that racism, the external force of racism on our community, has been devastating. But at the same time, we must admit that also internally in our community, racial discrimination has affected some of us. No one is born with self-hatred. No one is born with some inclination to do a sister or a brother in. Before saying about the political meaning of race, just let me say that anyone that denies their race denies the God that made the race. And so we're here, not so much to... I'm out of time already. Well, let me go to my conclusion. We in the NAACP, among all of the issues that will be discussed, our top priority is economic development, economic empowerment, community development, and also reducing gang violence. I'm glad to see former gang leaders in the audience today. What better way to reduce gang violence in our cities and rural areas than involve gang leaders themselves and putting down their arms? The question is, once they will put down their weapons, what would they pick up? I hope that, as we discuss the political meaning of race in this panel, that we will provide solutions. And, Mr. Chairman, one solution I would like to say, that I believe that we in the NAACP would like to join with the Congressional Black Caucus in sponsoring, is not just a one, two-hour discussion, but several days of discussion on the economic empowerment of the African-American community. The NAACP wants to join with the Congressional Black Caucus in searching out to come with not only an analysis of our economic state based on racial discrimination, but the strategies that we must employ together to uplift our people and ensure that we've not only just survived in the 21st century, but we will be together and maximize our God-given true gifts and talents. Thank you very much.
Now, you may see a person's name not on your program, but seated at our dais. And that is Representative Maxine Waters. There had been... Wait, wait. I just want to explain something to you. There had been some difficulty about the lack of a female representative on the panel. But I want you to know that the organizers did have Angela Davis scheduled to appear on this panel, and she was unable to attend. So Maxine Waters was kind enough to step in, so we welcome her now.
Thank you very much. I am more than delighted to serve on this most important panel today. I would like to thank Harold Ford for his leadership in organizing this weekend. I would also like to thank Kwayisi Infume for his leadership of the Congressional Black Caucus. I would like to thank all of the members of the Congressional Black Caucus for the direction and focus that they have given to this weekend. Please give them all a big round of applause. I'm especially pleased to fill in and serve on this panel. This panel represents the most progressive leadership in America today. My name is Maxine Waters. I'm a black woman. I'm a sister. And I think I'm very clear about who I am and what I care about. This discussion is so important today because there is a concentrated, well-organized effort to keep our voices closed and shut down on the discussion of race. If you attempt to talk about the hate crimes, the burning of a black man in Florida, if you attempt to talk about police brutality, that wild and crazy Daryl Gates in Los Angeles, if you attempt to talk about the redlining of black communities in this nation, cannot borrow money, insurance companies, banks, and savings and loans, who have systematic excluded us, they try and shut you up. If you attempt to talk about the new racism and discrimination in voting and participation in elections, they will go to court and challenge reapportionment. It is time for us to talk about race. It is time for us to talk about racism. It is time for us to use our power. People will talk about coming up with an agenda. And folks want you to tell them, one, two, three, four, five, what we've got to do to love ourselves. Ladies and gentlemen, it is important for you first to understand that unless you know that you're important and special and somebody, nobody else will ever know that. Please do not wait to be given instructions about how to be a person. Please do not beg folks for power. Nobody is going to give it to you. My message to you today is to understand that each of us have power. You don't have to be elected to office to have power. You don't have to be identified as a community leader to have power. You were born with power. And until you understand that, you're never going to be able to exercise power. Let me close by saying, recently, following the rebellion in Los Angeles, the President attempted, at that time, Bush, to have a meeting at the White House. I learned about it on television as I was preparing for work. I called the Speaker to let him know I had not been invited. The Speaker said, "Well, it's the President's call. I don't invite to the White House. The President does that." I said to the Speaker, "Are you going?" He said, "Well, most certainly, I've been invited." I said, "Are you on your way?" He said, "Certainly." I said, "You get there, tell the President I'm on my way." I hurriedly dressed. I did not trust myself to drive, so I called a taxi. I said to the driver, "Take me to the White House." The driver said, "Yeah, right." I got to the White House, used my little ID card they give you in Congress to get in. They didn't know I wasn't supposed to be there. I walked up to the door and opened it. The woman inside grabbed a hard and said, "Oh, my God, we were not expecting you." I said, "You'd better tell them I'm here." Now, the reason I tell you this story is this. It's very simple. If I'd waited for an invitation, there was none. If I thought the White House was such a special place that I was not supposed to go, I would not have gone, because I would not have understood that the White House is my house. If I buy into the definitions about what is leadership and who gets invited at what time, I would not have been able to exercise my power. The lesson is this: We've got to redefine. We've got to give direction. White folks will not be able to solve the problems of our community. We can discuss it all day long. But until we use our power, number one, put people in office, take them out. Until we use our power and provide the kind of images that our young people can respect, be the kind of people that they will seek advice from, provide the kind of leadership where you will be welcome in the hood or in the White House. Until we do these things, using our power, we will have no power. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Turned it out, Maxine. And now, I would like to introduce the Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan, National Representative of the Nation of Islam.
In the name of Allah, the beneficent, the merciful, we thank Him for His coming and raising up in our midst the Honorable Elijah Muhammad. I greet all of you, my dear brothers and sisters, with the greeting words of peace, Assalamualaikum. To Congressman Kwesi Ann Fumi, distinguished members of this panel, brothers and sisters, the meaning of race. The Honorable Elijah Muhammad taught us that in this last 6,000 years, that white people were to exercise, rule, and sway over the inhabitants of the earth, and this they have done. There was no meaning to race before whites came to the earth and gave meaning to race. We were in existence for a long time on this earth, and we never gave meaning to race. The Holy Quran teaches us, "We created you into tribes and families, that you may know one another and parenthetically not to hate one another." But it seems as though this new family on our earth gave new meaning to race. They advanced the philosophy of white supremacy. White supremacy over the yellow, white supremacy over the brown, white supremacy over the red, white supremacy over the black. So we, as black people, were brought to America, and white folk gave meaning to race. They said we were inferior, and they said it so long that we believed it. They taught in their schools our inferiority. Religion, Christianity in particular, enforced the fact, or the false fact, that we were inferior by calling us the children of ham, doomed to be huas of wood and drawers of water. And they went throughout the earth, teaching the red, the brown, and the yellow, the inferiority of black and the inferiority of all colors other than white. So they gave meaning to race in education, in politics, in religion, in justice, and in all fields of human endeavor. So now, we are called upon to give new meaning to race. And in that new meaning, they are so frightened, they call us racist for giving new meaning to race. The Honorable Elijah Muhammad taught us that we are not black because we're cursed. We are black because we are the original people of the earth. And we are black, and out of us came all other races. They started from one blood, and that one blood is the original family of the earth, the Aboriginal black people. That's giving new meaning. Why is that necessary? Because before the Honorable Elijah Muhammad tried to give new meaning to race, they made us feel that the kinkiness of our hair, the broadness of our nose, the thickness of our lips, and the blackness of our skin was a badge of inferiority. So the Honorable Elijah Muhammad had to teach us why we should be proud of who we are and what we are, and take cognizance of the deep spiritual value and the tremendous accomplishments that black people have given to the advancement of civilization. This is giving new meaning to race. But in the end, races have beginning, and races will have an ending. There has to be an end to race in order for human beings to address each other on the human level as a human being. Christ said, or Paul said of Christ, that in Him, there is no Jew, no Greek, no male, no female, no bond, no free, all become one in Christ. That means that nationalism will have an end, racism will have an end, sexism will have an end, and humanity will have a beginning if they understand the Christ doctrine. So now, to give meaning to race and end it forever, black people have to take upon ourselves the challenge to end racism. White folk will never end it, but we have the power within ourselves to end it once and for all. How? How do we end racism? We meet too much as an inferior and superior. That's the meaning that white folk gave to race. They're superior, we're inferior. We meet from a power perspective that we are weak and they are strong. We meet as a minority, they are the majority. We have to get rid of these terms that suggest inferiority to who and what we are. Second, as a people, we must recognize the need for unity, and let nothing hinder us from coming together as a family. Why? Because only in our unity can we end racism from a power perspective. The Congressional Black Caucus this year, under Kwesi Ann Fumi, denied President Clinton, refused to come to the big house, like little children. And that man knew he had to make some kind of deals with the Congressional Black Caucus in order to get his legislative agenda through. That's power, that's unity. We can't break that unity in the Congressional Black Caucus. We must establish that unity. Second, third, we have got to start after the knowledge of self, to love one another to the point where we will stop violence on each other, then we will stop white violence on black people. Fourth, we have to learn the value of the black woman and respect and honor her as the mother of civilization. Fifth, by pooling our resources intellectually and financially, we don't have to sit around begging white people to do for us what we could unite and do for ourselves. So, a clean, self-respecting, moral community that respects family and is hard-working and developing strategies for their own liberation commands respect. You don't have to demand it, we command it. Wherever we go, they respect our presence, because they know that's a Muslim. He don't smoke, he don't drink, he doesn't gamble, he doesn't chase women, and he won't chase men. He's organized, he's united. Thank you. And so, in my conclusion, I recognize the value of every one of these participants. And I also recognize the value that if we don't strike a unified accord and let no outsider of our family break our unity, then we will deal with racism in America from a position of strength. And then tomorrow, we'll be able to say, "We gave new meaning to race, and when we gave meaning to race, we ended race." And then the human experience can begin. Thank you for listening. Assalamualaikum.
And finally, I'd like to call on the Reverend Jesse Jackson.
Thank you very much. Congressman Ford, who chairs this session, Congressman Fumi, other members of the Congressional Black Caucus, to Reverend Ben Chavis, to Nsafran Khan, and those of you who are here today. As we wrestle with part two of this crisis, as begun on yesterday by Lani Guinia and Dr. Mary Berry and Dr. Higginbotham, this matter of race. It is a matter of philosophy. It's a matter of law. It's a matter of politics. There is for us a challenge to respond, to somehow turn our pain into power and our scars into stars. And to move from just a discussion of self-love to one of self-determination, because it is a matter of power. Can a black man run for president? There was put over and over again to our intellectuals, who began to debate, what could not happen, should not happen, the time was not quite yet, which shows the depth of the scars. America, born in the sin and shaped in the iniquity of racism and classism and sexism, one of the three, racism is the most ominous, because you cannot marry out of it, you cannot learn your way out of it, you cannot move out of it, you cannot log cabin the White House out of it. We are in the belly of the whale. Yet even those barriers must not break our spirits. In the face of this challenge, some challenge it, some adjust to it, and some resist it. There are some days of significance for us as we broke down various levels of it. The Constitution determined that we were three-fifths of a human being, just a little higher than animals, but a little lower than people. And then that was 1857. Blacks had no rights, whites were bound to respect. Then 1863, emancipation proclamation. Then 1896, legal apartheid. And then 1954, the Supreme Court decision, equal protection under the law. And then 1964, the Public Accommodations Bill. I might add, the bombing in Birmingham took place yesterday, 30 years ago. There was a march in Selma in 1965, open house in 1968. In each of these instances, the drive to challenge this system came inside-out and never outside-in. Slave masters never retire and never grow weary. The enslaved must change their minds. Segregators never retire. The segregated must change their minds. Oppresses do not have a retirement plan. The oppressed must change their minds, and it is, we are transformed by the renewal of our minds. And so, in the final analysis, it is a mind thing. Now, let's look for these few moments at our predicament. If there is a plant open, we fight for our share of jobs, goods, services, and contracts. That's one predicament. But if the plant closes, and we get inside the plant of a closed plant, it's a moot question. As we meet this day, the Wall Street Journal reported, "In this last recession, only black people lost 60,000 jobs." We voted last year for an economic stimulus plan. Today, we have an economic hemorrhage. Private job layoffs, NAFTA fast-tracking jobs out in name of reinvest government, in fact, fewer government jobs, what we went to because we couldn't get private jobs. A freeze in next year's budget that will decrease education and job training spending for the first time in four years. So our predicament, as we're looking at this legislative weekend of an economic hemorrhage rather than a stimulus. We cannot be indifferent to the implications of the struggle about NAFTA. When there was an economic integration in Europe, Spain, and Greece, they had to lift them up, not to bring the rest of Europe down. It's a big debate about a health care plan. We tend to be the sickest and get to the hospital longest and die the first. We cannot be divorced from the health care debate. Redlining often done with our own money. Capital asphyxiation. President Sutton had to go to 53 banks to borrow money to buy W-L-I-B. There's a matter of access to capital. Well, what about this thing called plan? How did Israel make it back, or highest Poland making it back, or Russia making it back? There's a thing called a plan. For Poland, there's a 40-year plan that we're financing, 40-year plan at three-quarters of 1% first payment due in 10 years. It's called an economic plan with concessionary rate loans. Self-help has its place. We must stop the fratricide, but also study finance and study billing and trades and honor marriage vows and raise the babies that we make and study diligently and be the science what we are to athletics because of our priorities. Lastly, we got to use what we got. Last year, Mr. Harrington ran for mayor in Memphis, 250,000 votes cast. He won by 132 votes. Blacks voted 94%. Yesterday, in Detroit, in the city, 80% black, whites voted 85%, blacks voted 20%. We have not earned the right to do less than our best. There is something in the Justice Department today, there are 46,000 cases of police brutality since 1986. 46,000 cases. Only 15,000 selected for investigation, fewer than 200,000, fewer than 200, in fact, have been prosecuted. There is this matter of mandatory sentencing, the effect of racism. If you're caught with five grams of crack cocaine, mandatory five years in jail. You're caught 100 times more powdered cocaine, you're eligible for probation. So the mules go to jail, and the kingpins, finance politicians, and go across the border. A matter of race. And so, lastly, because this subject has depth and breadth, it must be a matter of constant discussion. I said this in closing, we must have more than race power. We also have redemptive power. We also have character. And to stop killing each other requires a quality of character. The raise the babies we make requires a quality of character. To coexist and not co-anulate requires a quality of character. Our ethnicity at its base has ethics at its base, and there's a quality of character. That's what we bring to America, a quality of character. Thank you.
They were terrific, weren't they? Let's hear it again. I have this announcement to make. The DC public school students from Eastern, Dunbar, Baloo, Hines, and School Without Walls, you will all be served lunch in the cafeteria after this forum. The NAACP... The NAACP officials will be there to greet you. As I said, we're going to ask you to write your questions out on cards. And I'd like to get the discussion going, first of all, by, we make great speeches. We, as black people, make terrific speeches. We're good speakers. And we all agree that there are racial divisions today like nowhere in recent memory. Things are worse. I want to know from each of you why, until we begin to be able to attack and get this consensus on race, why are things in the state that we're in today? And I'd just like to hear each of you briefly. Congressman?
Carol, let me suggest an answer to your question, not so much as to why they are that way in America, but why they are that way in our communities. At the Great Atlanta Exposition of 1896, where many times people tried to pit W.E.B. Du Bois and Booker T. Washington, one of the things Washington said at that time was far ahead of its time. He said that we must pick our battlefields and cast our buckets down where we are. Where we are is in the hood. It is in our churches. It is in our schools. It's in forums like this. In other words, what he was saying is what many of those who have preceded me have said. And that is that we must begin all over again to find ways to do for self, to bring about a different kind of integrity and in respect in our communities, to love one another and to get away from violence, to understand the inherent power that we have, and then to move on it. We have not done that. And that is why things are the way they are in many respects, in our neighborhoods, in our communities, in our homes, in our churches, and elsewhere. And you're right, we all do make great speeches. And we love the ability to orate and to suggest, through the use of semantics and grammar and inflection, those things that we feel so carefully and passionately about. But I think we all recognize too, that the greatest speech is the simplest one. And the one that Washington made that suggested that we cast our buckets down where we are is just as powerful as Maxine Waters saying that you have a power that nobody can define or take away from you, that it is yours. And so then, we've got to move to that. That's why we are here today, not to talk about why we don't have this and why we may not have that, but what we can have when we realize that inherent power and start loving one another and recognizing, as Minister Fariakhan and others have said, that no one will do for us but us, and to accept that as our creed and our guidance.
Okay. I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying. But I guess I'm asking something more specific. Like, was it 14 years, 12 years of Republican administrations? Is it the media? I always hear it's the media's fault. Is it economic problems that pit people against each other? Reverend Chavis?
Well, Carl...
I'm looking for something like that.
Yes, well, let me give you a quick answer. Yes, it has been the media. Yes, it has been 12 years of Reagan and Bush. But it's more than that. One of the things I learned a long time ago from my granddaddy, if you want the right question, if you want the right answer, ask the right question. And I think that there is no one single answer to our predicament. The situation that affects more than 40 million descendants of Africans in the United States of America is very complex. And it's a combination of some of the issues that you raise and more. And it's the cumulative effect, where sisters and brothers are born into communities where hope wasn't just lost, where hope was lost a long time ago. And what we have to do is to restore. We have to work at it. I think what I would like us to spend the limited time we have is not only why, that's the analytical question, but what are we going to do about it? I suggest that every single national African-American organization should join with the Congressional Black Caucus to have a session, maybe away from the press, maybe away from one of the forces that divides us. One of the problems is where we have not been able to achieve the kind of unity that we should have achieved in our community all these years. Because racism is nothing new. The reason why we're having this panel is not because some of us all of a sudden realized that race was a problem. It has been a problem. The question is, what are we going to do about it? And I think that my simple answer, Carol, to the way you posed the question is simply this. The solution is resident within our people.
That's right.
We underestimate what we have in terms of our own capacity to rise to the occasion of our situation in this nation. Every single national African-American organization should join with the Congressional Black Caucus to have a session, maybe away from the press, maybe away from one of the forces that divides us. One of the problems is where we have not been able to achieve the kind of unity that we should have achieved in our community all these years. Because racism is nothing new. The reason why we're having this panel is not because some of us all of a sudden realized that race was a problem. It has been a problem. The question is, what are we going to do about it? And I think that my simple answer, Carol, to the way you posed the question is simply this. The solution is resident within our people.
That's right.
We underestimate what we have in terms of our own capacity to rise to the occasion of our situation in this nation.
Okay, Reverend Jackson?
I hope that in our analysis of it, we don't conclude that we ain't winning. We're winning. There's going to be an election in South Africa a few months from now because we winning. That was a Middle East agreement signed on the White House lawn last Monday because we got the scars in our bodies. We're winning. We came here 30 years ago for the March on Washington. From Texas across to Florida up to Virginia, we couldn't use a single public toilet. We could not use a single hotel. We couldn't drink water from a single fountain. We did not have the right to vote. We didn't have a Congressional Black Caucus. We didn't have 400 black mayors. We did not have the capacity to even think about foreign affairs, dealing in private survival. But just like when David knocked down Goliath, he couldn't go and party because Goliath wasn't no unique. He had some babies. And you knock down Jim Crow and you got Jim Crow Esquire. The giants keep coming. And so do not end up in a way you say, but we just, what can we do? Well, we, in fact, the laws that trapped South Africa of apartheid in 1948 came from here, from the 1896 laws. What Mandela is trying to do now is what we achieved in 1965. The fact is, we are winning, and our struggling has not been in vain. But there are some different options. For example, when Dr. King would make the case that we just end racism by law and get inside the plant gate with an education, we can grow. That was a period of economic growth. Now we get inside the plant, and the plant is closed. There's a very different context in which we operate. Zero economic growth among the industrial nations of the world is a factor in this. The economic downturn cannot be ignored. Lastly, we beat legislation with Jim Crow, but now Jim Crow Esquire regulation. The giants keep coming. And I would say, lastly, Iris Sede is on his way back to Haiti because of us. Mandela got out of jail because of us. We're going to bring that matter to a resolution in Nigeria because of us. And now there will be an urban policy because we will not back down. So in the face of all of these challenges, do not assume that our struggles have been in vain and not productive.
I'll take some brief comments from Minister Fariakhan and Representative Waters, and then go to your questions.
The scripture teaches, "My people are destroyed for the lack of knowledge." And it is ignorance that is the worst enemy of the rise of our people to fulfill our destiny. That ignorance is fed on by corrupt leadership. Now, the scripture again says, "Woe to the shepherds who feed themselves and not the flock." Should not the shepherds feed the flock? Most of our leaders are handpicked by the very enemy that we're trying to get free from. It's all right for us to say we have a Voting Rights Bill and a Public Accommodations Bill, and all of us, including myself, have benefited from those bills. But to get a Public Accommodations Bill and a Voting Rights Bill, and then close black hotels because we sleep in white ones, or close black establishments so that we can spend our money with our oppressor, is not winning. Reverend Jackson, I submit. I submit. Wait, wait. On one hand, we are winning because every one of these brilliant congresspersons, they represent us. They are brilliant men and women. These are brilliant people in front of us. But what good does it do to have a brilliant head not connected to a black body? I submit. I submit that until and unless we, as a mass, connect with the Congressional Black Caucus and our black leaders connect to the black masses, and don't take your eye off the prize because now you can sit in boardrooms and be media folk now because little black people marched in the streets and suffered and went to jail to make openings for those of us who sit in leadership. Now, we've got to unite at the top and develop strategies to free our people. Otherwise, we will be saying, we're winning, but the masses keep losing. So if the masses keep losing, then we can't be winning unless our agenda is personal. We're looking for self-aggrandizing. But if we're looking for the liberation, if we want the liberation of our people, then ain't none of us winning until all of us become winners.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. I need a gavel. Let's quiet down so we can go on. Give everybody a chance. Representative Waters, you wanted to respond?
Yes, I understand the question to be, why are things in the state that they're in today? And Ms. Simpson, your instruction to us was to try and identify who's causing it. And you said, is it the media? Is it government? Who is it? Again, I have to reflect back on perhaps everything that's been said here today. We have to understand that we have power.
Yes.
And before we start to place blame on anybody, we must examine whether or not we're using our God-given power.
That's right.
I come from a family of 13 children. My mother, for the most part, raised us. We didn't have any health care. We didn't have much of anything. As a matter of fact, when our tooth began to hurt from a cavity, we stuffed cotton in the hole, and we went on to school. I tell the story of the cotton in the hole in the tooth because it is a clear example that I can make to you about a little black girl at 10 years old hurting, but in school. We've got the power to overcome what we have to overcome in order to get where we have to go. So let us not underestimate
ourselves.
ourselves and our power. Secondly, education.
That's right.
Learning. Don't be afraid to learn. As a matter of fact, get nosy. Get curious. Seek out information. I say to you in the most sincere and the most profound way that I can say it, there is nobody on God's green earth any smarter than I am. You understand that? Because I have the ability to learn. You remember what your grandma used to tell you when she said, "Go to school. Try to learn some." Them white folks up all night trying to figure out how to take something away from you.
Grandma said it.
And don't have a good time. Enjoy life. But while we're making foolishness, people are planning
Yes.
and strategizing and determining our futures. So we've got to understand how to learn. I was talking with some young brothers in the hood. They said, "No, I ain't going to work, Ms. Waters. I'm a gangster. I'm going to go out there and get mine." I told them, "I've never seen a dumb gangster." You got to be smart in order to be a good gangster. So what am I saying to you? Learn. The systems that are developed get more complicated. Our communities are suffering because we don't know how to use government resources. We don't know how to respond to requests for proposal. The game is new. In the '60s, we used to go down to City Hall, beat up on somebody, get a little money, go home. Think we got something. Today, they put out an R-A-F-P. If you cannot respond to R-A-F-P, you get no money from government. And so we've got people sitting around unable to utilize the systems. The systems are not so complicated that we can't understand them, but we refuse to use our God-given power to figure out the systems. Implementation. We should be willing to work harder than anybody else. Don't let anybody else outwork you. If it means you stay up all night long, you stay up all night long in order to be number one tomorrow. You've got to be able to work hard because the obstacles are greater.
That's right.
Folks sitting around talking about they don't sweep our streets. Sweep your own streets. They not giving us something for our babies. I don't want anybody to take care of my baby. Take care of your own baby. All that I'm saying to you is, if you understand the power, if you're willing to learn, if you're seeking the answers, if you're exploring, requiring the answers, and then you're working hard for implementation. And if you have no fear, it is important not to fear anyone.
That's the key.
My grandmother used to tell us. She would say, "I'm not afraid of the Forky Tail devil." I didn't know what she meant at that time, but I understand it now. I can deal with presidents or kings or the brothers in the hood where I walk the streets because I ain't afraid of them. I'm not afraid of them or ours. I'm not afraid of them or ours. So you cannot have fear and win.
That's right.
You cannot have fear
Talk sister.
and be number one.
Talk sister.
You must understand that nobody is more powerful, more special, or smarter than you are. And when you understand that, you will have no fear.
Okay, here's a question from the audience. It is not signed, but let me read it to you. "It seems to me that unity must be the first step towards empowerment. However, how can we as a people unite when there is such disunity even among our leadership, including today's panelists? Specifically, I have in mind the dissension between many of our black leaders, including Jesse Jackson, and those men who agree on goals but disagree on how to get to where we want to be, like the Minister Farrakhan. So I'd like those two gentlemen to respond to that question."
It's alright, it's alright. It's okay.
I'm very, very glad that such a question was raised in this forum. Because Jesse Jackson, in my mind, is one of the most brilliant black men that we have on the scene today. And one of the most knowledgeable black men that we have on the scene today. And certainly, if we envy or if we are jealous of the gifts that God gives to each of us, then we will work against one another and not with and for one another. I think that I proved my love for Reverend Jackson. And I've proved it over and over and over again. So when you want to talk about disunity, don't talk to Farrakhan. Because, no. Wait a minute. When Reverend Jackson asked me to come by his side in 1983, as he was desiring to make his bid for the presidency of the United States, I came to his side. And I brought the Muslims under my leadership to his side. I wasn't so much for leadership that I couldn't take second to my brilliant brother. I was glad to represent him, because I knew if he never won, that man's bold run for the presidency would free black youth forever from thinking that the only thing we could be was fighters and runners and basketball players and football players. But Jesse proved that we could be thinkers and formulators and planners and governors. I loved him for that. And when he said he was gonna run for the presidency, I wasn't standing like the rest of them when he made the announcement. I was sitting in my seat with tears running down my eyes, because I knew that my brother was embarking upon a road that could cause him the loss of his life. And because of his unselfishness, we would not let the JDL threaten his family. We put a guard around his house. And I stood for my brother. And I stand for my brother. Our differences are not such that we can't reconcile them if there is no power in between us or no agenda in between us that is personal rather than national. When, I'll say this, and I'm through. I loved my brother yesterday, and I love my brother today. And even though we may have differences, that's alright, because we're gonna have differences. But the difference that we cannot afford to have is a difference that allows an intimate to both of us to get between us and keep us from representing the best interests of our people. When Reverend Jackson and I stood together, it gave hope to the entire population of black people that Muslims and Christians could work together for a goal bigger than us. And we still stand ready to work for a goal bigger than Jesse and bigger than Farrakhan. Jesse and Farrakhan are passing off the scene. But black people will be on the scene henceforth, now and forever. So the goal that will unite Reverend Jackson and Farrakhan is working for the total liberation of our people. And if we have differences, we never discuss them with you. the media does not want a united Farrakhan and Jackson. They want to make Farrakhan the boogeyman so that I have spiritual aids. My brothers can't kiss me in the light. They have to kiss me in the dark. They treat Farrakhan like a prostitute. But I'm saying today, all of that hypocrisy has to end so that the salvation of our people can begin. Thank you.
Mr. Minister.
I would assume
Mr. Minister, you're talking about my media? You're talking about my news media?
Yes, I'm speaking just about your news media. That news media focuses on division.
Okay, we're not going to.
And if it appears that that's what we're gonna have today, that will be the focus out of this Black Caucus forum tomorrow morning. Jesse and Farrakhan, got at it.
No, because we're gonna let Jesse have his time.
In my judgment, that's precisely why leaders, knowing the nature of the media, must speak to operational unity on principles and policy and direction and not on personalities, not on private agreements or disagreements or assessments. Because if we get off into that, we'll not discuss an urban policy that is now zero, which is where most of our people live. They would far rather discuss two or three or four personalities than the net loss of 60,000 jobs for black people. That's my preoccupation. They would rather discuss that than the implications of a Supreme Court. The suggestion that reapportionment, therefore getting 13 new black congresspeople, is taking advantage of white people. They would rather discuss that than to discuss a funding plan to break up the abounding poverty our people are trapped in disproportionately. They would rather discuss that than the impact of redlining for even those who have the training and the knowledge can't get the money to invest and grow. They would rather discuss personality than operational unity. I would assume that men and women can agree to agree and agree to disagree, but find unity on matters of principle and survival. And that's why I made the point, and I make it again, that some of us who are in the little people category. I went to jail July 17, 1960. Not for drugs, but trying to use a library. That's what little people went to jail. That the rest of us might have access to libraries to get the knowledge. Some of us celebrate yesterday 30 years of four babies blown up in Birmingham because of that. We were not handed a public accommodations bill. We now take it for granted. Some people were part of that fight. Some analyzed it, but it was a bloody struggle. Some little people, I was one of them, marched for the right to vote in the first place in Selma. Now we have a problem of forces gerrymandering annexation at large, role purging, trying to undercut the right of that vote, which raises another set of questions for us to mobilize around now. Shall we unify around DC statehood? That's an empowerment question. Should we unify around a single payer national healthcare system? That is an empowerment question. Should we unify around a social contract before we support NAFTA? That is an empowerment question. Should we challenge the media to focus on Angola as it is on Bosnia and Lebanon? More folk are dying in Angola than in Bosnia and Lebanon combined. That is an empowerment question. It seems to me that where, no matter what our constituency base may be. And I also think that the media for its own purposes, and therefore some people exaggerate too much for what our distinctions are as opposed to what our common base is as ministers and as friends. And my only observation in this whole unity business, since we're so broad and diverse, is to put forth an agenda that deals with policies that affect the masses of our people. And if we leave here this weekend without a clear position on economic growth, without a clear position on why we've lost those 60,000 jobs, without a clear position on urban stimulus versus urban hemorrhage, without a clear position on those matters, we will have missed an opportunity, in my judgment, to advance the cause of the masses of our people. It means something special to us. From the 46,000 cases of police brutality at that Justice Department since 1986, and fewer than 200 prosecutions, and there is no form of direct action at that Justice Department. And I would hope it would keep our eyes on that prize.
Just to let you know, we're going to take just a couple of more questions, and then I'll call on our panelists for some final brief wrap-up comments. And we're gonna try to get you out of here by 2:30. Here's a question. If we agree that our youth are our present and future, do the panelists feel that we are adequately nurturing our young to carry on the torch and the struggle? And there are also questions similar to that that I'd like to incorporate into this, and that is the issue of the black family. I've been in housing projects in Harlem and Chicago Cabrini-Green where 80% of the residents are single women and their children. No men present. The crisis of the black family. How can we move forward? And if with our youth, prepare them for the struggle tomorrow when too many of our families are in crisis today? Maxine, you'd like to respond?
Yes, let me attempt to to deal with the question of youth and families. One of the most devastating problems confronting the African-American community today is the loss of potential, the loss of life of African-American men. We travel through these cities all over America, city after city after city, and we see the devastation. Hanging on the corners, slinging a little crack trying to survive, turning on each other, father and children. Unemployed, untrained, unskilled, dropped off of America's agenda. We must get in the leadership of this problem. It is absolutely devastating. I tried a little something in Congress this past year, based on a little something we found out about in South Central Los Angeles. We have built our own little funding network. Where I went to Normandy and Florence, where the Denny beating took place. Because the news media was casting all of the young men down there as crooks and criminals and thugs. I went down there to talk with them and to see who they were. They were not crooks, criminals, or thugs. It was my brother, my son, my children, your... It was us. When I talked with the young brothers, some were saying, Ms. Waters, if I could just learn a trade. I've been out of school since I was 15. I kind of dropped out. Ms. Williams, the mother of Damian Williams, turns out to be the mother of many of the kids on the block. One of the young men that we finally put in school is a young man whose parents left. She took him in, Pollard. We took Pollard and a whole group of them, and we said, let's go to school. We started to put them in the car, and we drove them to the Maxine Waters Employment Preparation Center in Watts. And then my women's group decided we were gonna give them a stipend. We were gonna raise money. And so we've started with these little $50 stipends, just $50. Three of them graduated there and now enrolled in El Camino College. We have now organized a whole group where we're just helping out a little bit with haircuts and lunchmen and a little stipend. So I thought I'd bring the stipend idea to Congress. I was attacked viciously by the right wing and Rush Limbaugh. All the right-wing media went up. You know, when we try to deal with the problems of our children, we talk about resources that are needed, all of a sudden, we become welfare queens. In addition to not having a defense against it, and our people not knowing how to deal with it, I get on the streets when I walk the streets of America, folks who say, ooh, you should have heard what Rush Limbaugh said about you. And then that's when they start to say, well, you know she's got a dirty mouth because she said I don't give a you-know-what, what Rush Limbaugh cares about me. The fact of the matter is this. Our young people need some help and need some resources, whether government gives it to them or not. Black men sitting in this audience, I know a little something about being a role model for black women and for black girls, and I want to talk with sisters about that. But black men, the Pollards, the Crips and the Bloods and the young black men in the hood need you. They need some help, they need some support, and they need some assistance. We can help them. We can get them back in school. And we can get them back in school if we decide we're gonna take a little bit of our earnings through our organizations and our associations, provide the stipends that they need in order to get the haircuts and have the transportation money. We're gonna continue to fight this big system. We ended up in Congress with a big fight. And Congressman Clay and others helped me to attach an amendment to the Flood Appropriations Bill, where I said, you're gonna give us some money or we ain't gonna fix the flood. And white folks went crazy. They went so crazy until, most people don't know what happened with the stipend idea. Some folks came to me from other sources in government and said, you know what? We discovered you don't have to have legislation, we can just do it. And so we have a $100 a week stipend. It's not a lot of money, only $50 million. But you can provide millions more dollars from our pockets to do this work. So we need some resources out in the community that we put together and we muster. Thank you.
Carol.
Reverend Jackson?
I guess what I
You all want to respond. Let's make a group, all of you want to respond.
Okay, keep trying to say. Is I do not want the forces that we must fight to get off the hook cheap. And significant that we do not confuse exciting rhetoric with conservative demands. Dr. King said after we got the public accommodation bill, he said, this has been a bloody period. And once we get the right to vote and move toward economic justice, the ballgame gonna change. Y'all hear this for a moment, please. He said, we have come to Washington. The media focused on, I have a dream. That was the rhythmic climax of his speech, Mary. And that was not the text of his speech. The text of that speech was, balanced check, marked insufficient funds. It was, his thesis had to do with economic equality, economic parity, access to capital, access to money. If the media wants to have a freak show on me and Minister Lewis, we've been relating 25 years. Our families spent Christmas together. How many black people that feed beside us?
How many black people that feed beside us? That's a cheap way out of this. They came together. We've been coming together. Why the hell does Chris come to come together to please no damn body? We grown people. And so, and so all this, the rest of that, did they meet together? Yeah, met, spent Christmas together. And he was wearing green leather pants, by the way. And, and, and all that. But the point is, what does that have to do with this? When we leave here today, what they ain't going to write about in every city in this country, whether we show up or not, plants are closing, jobs leaving, tax base eroding, school systems bankrupt, opening two weeks late in Chicago for 500,000 children. Three weeks late in New York City, in Michigan, the governor has wrapped up a race bait and a tax rebate to run a whole system, $6 billion in debt. Folks in Michigan will not go back to their hometown on a "can we love each other" program. I loving each other is self-evident, but there is no remedy in fighting the whale that encompasses us in that agenda. And I'm concerned that we have the proper correlation therefore between when Maxine goes back to Los Angeles and we go, as we do, to churches and preach self-love and love each other and self-respect. And the final analysis, the monies we need to train our youth is cut off from us. And the plants that used to employ them have left us. And we are funding the redevelopment of the countries and not using our own money to develop where we live. It seems to me therefore that we must not get trapped where when it's over on Monday morning, the structures that control money and power in fact have been let off the hook. Thank you.
Jesse, I'm sorry. Reverend Jackson, we're going to have to move on. You will have an opportunity to make your closing statement. Minister Farrakhan, you wanted to respond?
Yes, I'd like to make just a couple of brief, brief comments. First, our youth are suffering because they are not really connected. There was a study done some 20 years ago that the five greatest impacting institutions on young people were number one, home, number two, church, number three, school, then number four was peers, number five was television. That has all changed 20 years later. Home is not the number one influence on children, neither is school second or third, neither is church, but the number one influence on our young people are other young people. Now what happened to leadership? The leadership has been disconnected from the youth in terms of the parents, in terms of the teachers, in terms of the preachers, in terms of the politicians. We're disconnected from the youth. We're not speaking the language of an entire new generation that has come up under our foot. We took our eyes off the prize. The prize wasn't public accommodation. The prize was making a future for our children. Now, what we don't understand probably is that we're economic factors. As Reverend Jackson said, the plants closed. 80% or 60 or 70% of our homes are run by a female. The male is gone, and he's gone in direct proportion to the loss of jobs. Mothers sense Roe versus Wade, where you sanctify killing the fruit of the womb. And it's all right to do it in a doctor's office because that life is interfering with your life, but it's not all right when your child is 11 and 12 and 13 to get a gun in his hand. And because somebody wears their hat on the wrong side or has a different color on, they blow each other away. But you don't understand that that's the fruit of a tree that has gone corrupt and disrespectful of life itself. So the youth are not listening to preachers. The youth are not listening to teachers, and the youth are not listening to their parents, and the youth are not listening to politicians. We can talk all day in a room like this, but who can get on the corner and talk to the young? She can, because number one, she's not afraid of our youth. She knows how to talk to them because she's got a mother instinct. I close this. Yes, the plants are closing. Yes, we're losing jobs. Yes, government has a responsibility to aid in this effort, and we have a responsibility to back the Congressional Black Caucus in getting aid for the communities. But what about $300 billion that come through our hands each year? What are we doing with the money that comes into our hands? Reverend Jackson, I say with deep love for you, your personality is important. My personality is important. It's not that we are important, but God has made our personalities relevant to the struggle. And if your personality and mine and Reverend Chavis's and Quayson Fume and Maxine Waters, if we'd started guiding our people better, then they would listen because of the personality that God has blessed us to have. And then we could turn some of that $300 billion that we are throwing away into meaningful resources to fund anything that we want done. If the white man won't do it for us, and if government won't do it for us, we cannot sentence another generation to death. We have got to unite our personalities and do something to help ourselves. We have to do it.
And Reverend Chavis?
Well, actually, we're not having a debate. We are trying to clarify our perspectives. And it is a blessing, I believe, not a curse, to have different perspectives. The question is, will we have mutual respect of our different perspectives? The question is, and I agree with Minister Farrakhan, that we need to check out who our youth are listening to. But I want to know who is listening to our youth. We in the NAACP have a youth and college division. We have 2,180 branches, college chapters, and youth councils throughout the nation. We're trying now to go to Caribbean and to Africa. But one of the things I've done over the last five months is not so much telling young people anything as it has been to sit and listen to them. When I went to South Central Los Angeles a day after I was elected, I didn't pass through the hood. I resided in the hood. I slept on the floor with gang leaders in Nicholson Gardens and Jordan Downs and Imperial Courts in Watts, California. I looked in a few weeks to do the same thing in Chicago with Gator and others. The point I want to add to the discussion, not to say that what the minister says is wrong, or what Justice says is wrong, what I'm saying is right, that's not the issue. The issue is that we need a number of strategies. We need to work together more than we've ever worked together. And in all honesty, because no one has said it yet, I'm going to say it, because I want the issue to be clarified before we end this panel. It was a mistake not to have Minister Farrakhan to speak at the March on Washington. It was a mistake. And somebody, on behalf of the NAACP, we have the courage to say that. Now, it is also a mistake, Minister Farrakhan, for your publication, to denounce brothers who did not prevent you from speaking. But I would like to discuss that with you in private, because I love you and I respect you. If you look at the history of our people, we've always had debate. And part of our history is very painful, because after the debate, sometimes we kill each other. At the leadership level. And I don't want to see that history repeat itself on this day or any day in the future. Everyone up here is precious. Everyone out there is precious. There are millions more who are precious, who are depending on us not just to engage in upmanship, but to embrace one another with a sense of respect, with a sense of integrity and dignity, and offer those young people that we listen to and that who we want to follow us with a measure of substance, more or less symbol, with real hope. And I think that Chairman Fume, your leadership in the caucus, I think it's interesting that you're one of the younger chairmans on the Congressional Black Caucus. And that is not to defile the elders, because we must respect our elders. If they do wrong, we must say how they've done wrong with love and respect. If our young people do wrong, we must say that they are wrong. But if we do wrong, we must have the courage to say that we've not only done wrong, but we will not do wrong anymore for the sake of the people that we speak in behalf. God bless you.
Sorry, I'm only going to be able to give you each about a minute to give a closing statement, but I hope you will address what was a common theme in many of the questions, and that was, what steps do you as leaders plan to take to continue to work together in the future, or how we can all work together and affect this meaning of race in America today? And I'd like to begin by calling on Reverend Jesse Jackson.
Very briefly, thank you. And it's been a joy to be a part of this session. Just five points. One, this media factor the minister referred to. It's the first generation by age 15 that's seen 18,000 hours of television, listened to more than 22,000 hours of radio compared to 11,000 hours of school and less than 3,000 hours of church or temple. To the mass media, quantitatively, has more access to the minds of our children, and qualitatively penetrates more deeply than home, church, and school combined. That's a subject unto itself. There is an industrial collapse that's collapsing whole cities and states. There is thirdly, this ethical collapse, this spiritual degeneracy. For many of us, getting into Canaan land has meant abandoning the ethical commandments that got us there. I submit to you this day, if we were to in fact embrace the Ten Commandments as the heart of an urban policy, it would change the very character of where we live. We must use at least these five tactics when we go back home. Some combination of demonstration, litigation, legislation, registration, independent political initiatives, and operational unity. Nobody put it better than the writer when he said these things. If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then they will hear from heaven, and God will forgive our sins and heal our land and rebuild our people. Keep hope alive.
You're right, Maxine. I'm sorry, Representative Waters.
Thank you very much. In trying to wrap up with a minute or so, the first thing that I am going to do to be a better participant, working for unity, is to work on myself and try to be the best person that I can possibly be. I'm going to try and be the most moral person that I can possibly be, the most caring and the most loving that I can be, and I'm going to try and act responsibly so other people will want to work with me. I'm going to try and remove the shackles and the obstacles by redefining. I've got to clear my head, and we've got to clear our head of rules, regulations, and definitions that have been placed upon us, because we cannot do and we cannot be unless we do that. Finally, I am going to do some serious capital formation. I'm going to put money together. I'm going to put money together so we can buy some things. I understand how we can get our communities going. Everybody's looking to be at IBM and Xerox, but we need some shoe stores, some cleaners, some businesses in our community that we can put together. And I'm going to try and help find some money for folks to do that. And God willing, we're going to make Mary Ann Spragons the Chair of FDIC in order to help do that. And I'm going to organize. In removing the shackles of the definitions about who we shouldn't be with, et cetera, not only am I pleased and proud to be here today on this panel, but at my workshop tomorrow on banking, financial institutions, and urban development, I've invited Mike Milken to come and tell us how he got the money. The rules say, elected officials, you may not do that, that you cannot associate, consort, or be identified with folks that we say we don't allow to be in these systems. Break the rules, redefine. If Mike Milken became multimillionaire on Wall Street, I want to know how he did it. And so that's part of my agenda and my approach for dealing with unifying and organizing. Thank you very much.
Reverend Chavis and then Minister Farrakhan.
In answer to the question, as a result of this panel, what do I, and what I would say, what will the NAACP do? One, we're going to pray for our people. Two, we're going to turn to our people in more profound ways than we have ever in the 84-year history of our organization. Three, we're going to take leadership in economic development, community development, and economic empowerment. We must not only go to Denny's and get served, but we must own these places in our communities. Next, and finally, our young people. I hope all young sisters and brothers that are listening or will see this program at some later time, please know that we in NAACP, we need you, we love you, we respect you. But we don't want you to just come join. We need you to participate in helping us to revive the nation's oldest and largest civil rights organization. And by the grace of God, we want to raise up a new generation of freedom fighters. By the grace of God, we want to raise up brothers and sisters that will have the courage not only to embrace each other at whatever level they may find themselves, but will embrace each other in their very homes, in their own community. I'm a grandfather. I have four grandchildren and six children. My oldest daughter... My oldest daughter is an alcoholic. I have a son who I had to rescue off crack cocaine. When we talk about these issues, we're not engaging in rhetoric. We're engaging in life. It's difficult to capture our people who have been captured by interests that are not in our interest. But we have no other choice for the sake of our own children and for the sake of the children of all of our peoples. We must be more determined than the oppressor is determined to keep us down. We've come a mighty long way. Some of the other panels have spoke to the progress that we've made. Some others have spoke to the difficulties that are in our midst. And I just want to close by saying and wrap up that our destiny is in God's hands and is in our hands. If we put it in somebody else's hands, we forsake our Creator and we forsake our own destiny. God bless this panel. God bless the Congressional Black Caucus. God bless Minister Farrakhan and the Nation of Islam. I'm a Christian. I can, I will embrace this brother, even if he's of a different religion, he's still my brother. And even though we may have, we don't have problems. In fact, the matter is, I resist efforts that will try to put a wedge between us because of some other folks have differences. We must have more unity as we look toward the 21st century than ever before. If we don't have unity, then what Du Bois said decades ago will still be the problem in the 21st century.
Minister Farrakhan?
First, I would like to thank Congressman Ford and Congressman Kwesi and Fumey and our sister, Ms. Simpson, for this wonderful experience for all of us here today. It's bigger than what it really appears. I thank my brother Reverend Ben Chavis for his statement that the exclusion of Brother Farrakhan in deference to others not liking me and not warning me there was a mistake. A mistake is an unintentional departure from right. An error is an intentional departure from that which is correct. It was more than a mistake, it was an error. And all of you who are sitting in this audience know that I've never used my words, my speech, or my pen to ever attack other black leaders. Never. But I feel that it was necessary for me to say and write what I wrote. And if that writing stirs us to the point where we will go in a back room and iron out our differences, then black people will be all the better for my exclusion from the March on Washington and my rebuke in the Final Call newspaper. I would like to close by saying that I am anxious to work with and not against the brothers and sisters in the Congressional Black Caucus and the brothers and sisters on this rostrum and those that are not represented here. And the Nation of Islam is committed to the struggle of our people for total liberation and empowerment. And I pray that Almighty God will bless us from this day forward, that when we have this meeting in a closed session, that we will iron out whatever differences we may have and make a pledge to each other that we can say in the public that we will never let somebody outside of our family determine what goes on in our family. And we will tell those who wish to exclude a member of the family from participating with the family, to keep their mouth out of our family business. And as a member of this family, if you see that I'm wrong, tell me. Because I am not too proud to humble myself to my brother and sister and ask for forgiveness when I know or have been shown I am in error. We will tell those who wish to exclude a member of the family from participating with the family, to keep their mouth out of our family business. And as a member of this family, if you see that I'm wrong, tell me. Because I am not too proud to humble myself to my brother and sister and ask for forgiveness when I know or have been shown I am in error. And I believe my brothers and sisters have the same quality that I just mentioned. And if we will do that, then we can come before our people with a united front. And that will give hope to every little brother and sister out there that is dying for the lack of hope. And if we want to give hope a chance, we got to give unity the biggest chance by getting in that room and talking to each other like a family should. And then come on out and work for the total liberation of our people. Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you. Chairman Infume has some final words.
Ladies and gentlemen, we would hope that you not make your way to the exit so quick. You know, in our church, we say you might miss a blessing. So I'm going to ask if you would just stay where you are for a moment and allow me to do a couple of quick things. I want to thank all of you for being here today from the bottom of my heart. And in particular, it's gratifying to see Dionne Warwick and Reverend Sharpton and Councilman Marion Barry. And Dr. Lenora Filani. And in particular, all the students who were here from high schools across this region. My thanks to Bill Clay of Missouri, to Don Payne of New Jersey, to Corinne Brown of Florida, to Bobby Rush of Illinois, and to Harold Ford of Tennessee. And the former gang members from Los Angeles who have changed their ways. And Chicago, thank you for being with us. My thanks to Carol Simpson of ABC for graciously consenting to be our moderator. And to the people of BET and C-SPAN and others. But on a point of personal privilege, allow me to depart for just a moment to thank the people of Baltimore who have and have continued to entrust in me a sacred opportunity to represent them and to be able to do what I do here in Washington and elsewhere. The Congressional Black Caucus, ladies and gentlemen, has tried today to give you an opportunity to hear the clearest of thinkers, to provide for us a clarity of thought. I sat with tears in my eyes a moment ago because I've lived long enough to know that life is a fleeting moment. And it's what we do now while we are here that really matters. And that God is still finding ways to smile on us and to give us new hope and new opportunity and to lift us. Tears because I recognize that many of the lessons today were lessons of old, the lesson of do for self, to love each other, to respect life, to understand our power, and to free our minds. God decided long ago He was going to make us different and distinct. And so when we look throughout the world, we see we are black and white and Jew and Gentile and Latino and Asian, that we come from all walks of life and all backgrounds. And that for those of us lost Africans in the diaspora, we find ourselves still on that sojourn to learn a basic lesson of life, a lesson that will allow our liberation to come forward. So let me say today as sincerely and as honestly as I can say, on behalf of the men and women of the Congressional Black Caucus, that we want the word to go forward today to friend and foe alike, that the Congressional Black Caucus, after having entered into a sacred covenant with the NAACP to work for real and meaningful change, will enter into that same covenant with the Nation of Islam, the Rainbow Coalition. To the Rainbow Coalition, to all of those fraternities and sororities and other organizations, to churches and to synagogues and to mosques where people want to make real and meaningful difference. And that no longer will we allow people to divide us anytime, anyplace, or in any way. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, one more thing before you leave. Could I get the microphone back, please? I have been asked to please ask you not to rush the stage, to please leave by the rear entrances and go to the next sessions. It is necessary to get our principals off safely, comfortably. And I'd like to close with a comment that Millie Rivers wanted to have read here. "It is an honor for me to be able to hear and see these great leaders of today. I pray that they will work together after this to help our race and the world." A wonderful benediction. Goodbye to you all.